Meeting is being recorded. Okay, we're ready to start? Okay, uh, it's seven o'clock at this time here. I'd like to call the Coventry zoning board a review to s- uh, to a jet, to a session. Uh, I'm gonna do a roll call first. Uh, Denise de Grade.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Keith Claudio.
Yeah.
Okay, Edward Ionati.
Yep.
Okay, uh, Lenny.
Yeah.
Uh, Bob Crowe, chairman, present. Okay, Russ is not here, Lockley, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, with the record re- collected, we have five members to conduct business to, uh, at this time here. Minutes of last month's meeting, uh, I really didn't see that. Did that come out?
Uh, you actually got it in the May packet. They were from the April seventh was the last meeting we had.
Was anybody able to review that?
Will they be accepted as presented?
Second.
Denise to make an emotion as presented. All right, and I have a second by Keith. All the favors say aye.
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 Nays? Ayes have it. Okay, minutes of the meeting are approved.
Mr. Chair, can I make an announcement, please?
Sure.
Uh, the application for Robert Coogan at sixty Raymond's Point Road has been continued over to next month as there was an issue with noticing. That's under old business.
Okay.
And then under new business DNS Development Group on Arizona Street, they also had an issue with, um, something they're asking for continuance to the July meeting as well.
All right. Okay, so then to run forward to the ratification of, uh, John Matthews is the owner, Stephen Lawrence is the applicant of Sessas Plot Map thirty-nine lot forty fifty-seven East Shore Drive. Uh, applicant is seeking dimensional variance and a special instrument to construct and attach two-story thirty-by-thirty-five garage twenty-point-five feet south side of the property line where twenty-six feet is required. We heard this, and, uh, do I have a ratification?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a, a motion that we ratify that decision.
Okay, I have a, a motion made. Do I have a second?
I second, Mr. Chairman.
Keith seconded, Denise made it. All those a favors say aye.
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 Any nays? Ayes have it. Okay, so that decision has been ratified. Okay, next, uh, we have, uh, old business, the Robert Cohen has been continued to next month, as you just stated. And then we have the own applicant of Walter Balkon. Uh, can you read this into the record, please?
Yes, so the, it's under old business. The owner applicant is Walter Balkan. Location is AP three eighteen lot fifty-nine, ten acres of pine road, zone is RR two. Applicant is seeking a dimensional variance and special use permit to remove the existing family dwelling and construct same, same using the existing foundation. The requested relief is sixteen feet of relief where forty is required on the southwest corner, twenty-eight feet of relief where forty is required on the southeast corner, eight feet of relief on the southeast front corner where forty is required, and seventeen feet on the north where forty-five is required.
Oh. Okay, is the applicant here?
Yes.
All right, uh, I'm gonna ask you, give you a full name and address for the record.
Walter C. Balkan, forty-five Fieldstone Drive, Coventry.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you to raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
Yes.
Okay, um, please explain to me in your own words what you'd like to do here.
All right, on, this house now is a twenty-four by forty-two ranch. My plan is to take it down, expand to possibly four hundred square feet on the backside of the foundation to enlarge the house, rebuild a new house on a new addition to the foundation and reuse the existing foundation. Um, on the left-hand side of the house will be an eight-foot breezeway along with a two-car garage. Um, the driveway entrance will remain exactly where it is. It'll just, when you get up the driveway, expand to the left a little bit. Um, I need reliefs on the setbacks, basically on the front, the back corner of the garage, the back corner off where a deck would be, and also on the right-hand side of the house, which is the north side of the house. Uh, Carrie stated all the, uh, the dimensions that I need a relief on. And that's approximately it. I'm gonna build another ranch. It's not gonna be a two-story house, gonna be a fairly similar house, just a little bit bigger.
Okay, strictly for a dimensional requirement, variance rather?
Uh, I believe so, yeah, special u- uh, special use permits for non-conforming lots. These are, you know, the zoning restriction, two-acre zoning, and it's a, it's under a half-acre lot, so anything I do to this house, it, because of that odd-shaped lot, I end up getting too close to property lines.
Bobby, Bobby, it's not just a dimensional variance. He needs a special use permit and some dimensional variances.
All right, so he needs a special use.
Right, for the expansion of a non-conforming, um, lot, because he's in a two-acre zone.
Okay.
Okay.
But that's a non-conforming lot of record, right?
It is, correct.
Okay, all right.
But he's also a dimensional variance, right?
Yes.
Correct. Because this acres of pine that right here, this is also acting as frontage. This side street here.
No.
Because it extends down, um, to get to the old Siemens lot where they had the, um, the jet ski, I mean, the, uh, the, the water show.
Yes, the ski show.
Ski show, yeah. So this is also a town road, therefore it's considered frontage. So he's got frontage over here and frontage over here.
Okay, uh, I'm kinda slow tonight, Russ. Uh, okay, so acres of pine I see on the right-hand side. That's acres of pine, and I see.
He's got down below it.
Yeah, what's that?
That is also technically part of acres of pine. It's all, and it provides access to these lots down here. Let me go, let me show you, uh.
That continues, that doesn't end right where it shows it?
Bob, I'm gonna, I'm gonna show you an aerial. I think it might help you out. So, uh, let me just see, stop sharing for a minute. I'm gonna bring this one over. We'll go back to, we'll share this screen. Okay, so what we've got here, this lot fifty-nine is Mr. Balkan's lot?
Okay.
Okay, and what you've got here, this is, um, this is acres of pine coming down from one seventeen, okay?
Okay, that's what I needed, okay.
Right, this is coming down here, and this is the piece where they have the ski show, but as you can see, the frontage als- the lot also goes up this way. So acres of pine comes down this way, but there is a small little.
And people use that, that forces being used?
It is being used. It provides access to lots fifty-eight, fifty-seven, and fifty-six. That's their frontage.
Okay, how about lot sixty? I see it also has access to lot sixty.
It does have access to lot sixty, but that was just purchased, and he is building a new home on that, but he's gonna be building a new driveway coming in off this piece of acres of pine. Because the house is getting situated on the northern portion of the lot.
All right, so by his plans, how close is he gonna be? Okay, I see it now, yep, okay. Let me just pull up his his plans for.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Studly, he, he can comment on the setbacks, uh, and the relief that's being asked for.
All right, so he's gonna be closest to that side, what was that, nineteen feet?
So, um, John Studly here, so the corner, the back corner of the, the garage, that's the furthest point south. That'll be approximately twelve feet off of the property line.
Okay.
And that is the, uh, the most relief, um, that is requested.
Right.
Um, and then the, the.
Looks much further because the road is quite a ways over.
Yeah, so I was, I was just gonna say that you can see it on the plans, and also, um, i- i- if you were to go down that road, um, you can see there's probably almost double, um, and probably another twelve feet before you actually get to pavement, so it, it is twelve feet off the, the property line, but as far as being off of the street, it's, it's considerably further off of the street.
Now he's gonna be twenty-two feet away from Acres of Pine Road?
Yes, off the, from the front of the garage to the, the front property line, yes.
All right, so we're concerned with the twenty-two feet, the twelve feet, you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and how about the twenty-four feet on the deck?
Yep, so there's, um, additional relief for the deck, twenty-four feet, and then off of the, the northern side, there's twenty-eight feet from that property line.
Okay, and the northern side, how much is required on that twenty-eight?
On that side, it is forty-five feet.
Okay, now, I'm gonna ask a dumb question. He's gonna retain the existing foundation. How old is that foundation?
Nineteen sixty, approximately it was built. I had an inspection done on it, per the building inspector, by a certified, um, engineer, so I have a letter from him stating that the foundation is in good condition and reusable.
Okay, all right, that's good. All right, so you're gonna do, use, is it a full foundation going all the way around, or?
Uh, well, currently is, but I'm gonna add off the backside. What you see on this measurement with the, the relief is, with the deck, as you see the twenty-one and the twenty-one.
Yep.
That is being added, so that goes straight across the back. I'm adding six feet. Basically, with the deck is, it's going six feet back, twenty-one across, and then where you see the other twenty-one, that's going back fourteen feet off the back of the house, twenty-one across. That's gonna be master bedroom, master bath.
Okay, so you're gonna add, so you're just keeping the front foundation?
Yeah, yeah. I'll ke- I'm honestly gonna keep the center wall inside. The back wall, the existing foundation will be kept there to utilize for supports for the trusses.
Okay. All right, now, you've got a little tiny on your first plan. Russ, you go back up to that first, you had that little tiny where the twenty-eight feet is. What is that?
That was just proposed bulkhead. I hopefully oversized it. I approximated eight feet for a bulkhead entrance. Because bulkhead currently is in the middle of the back of the house now, and I didn't wanna put it there considering trying to put a deck on the house. I wanted to put it back off to the other side.
All right, so that's a bulkhead, and that's what's putting you closer, correct?
Yes, yes, it is.
All right, and that bulkhead's probably, what, about six feet?
I actually approximated eight, but I think in reality, more than likely they're six.
So you'll be a little further away?
Yes.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure I was covered in case it turned out to be eight, and I wanted extra head clearance for going down those stairs into the basement.
Okay, is there a set of plans on the actual house, or?
I don't have plans yet. They're out being drawn up now, because I was waiting to get to this process before I did something that I wasn't gonna be able to build.
Okay, so are we doing a one-story house, two-story house?
One-story, three-bed ranch. It's gonna be the same amount of bedrooms. It'll have another bath, uh, and a little bit more square footage in the garage.
Okay, and your height, what's your height gonna be?
Under thirty-five.
Under thirty-five?
Yeah.
So it's gonna be a one-story?
Yep.
Are you gonna be two stories underneath the foundation? You're gonna have room underneath the foundation?
Yeah, it'll be a full basement.
There'll be a walkout basement?
Well, not a walkout. It's gonna have to utilize bulkhead to go up the stairs to get out.
Okay.
It'll be, all be below grade on the basement.
Okay, and you're gonna have a full foundation underneath the garage?
Uh, well, standard, what, forty-eight inch footings? There's no space under the garage.
So that's gonna be a slab?
Slab, yes.
Okay.
Same with the mudroom. Mudroom will also be a slab.
Okay, all right.
The, the only thing that will be in the mudroom is my access to the basement from inside the house. That I propose for out there, so that's gonna go down deeper, but the rest of it will be a concrete slab.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna open the meeting to the rest of the members. I'm sure somebody else has some questions. Uh, Denise?
Um, I, I, I like the idea. Um, I can understand the need for the, the variances because he basically has two frontages, and he's kind of parked in the middle there.
It's a tough lot.
So, um, you know, he'll need, he does need relief on, on basically on all sides. Um, the house itself, I don't believe it's gonna be any too much bigger. Um, I see the porch, but the house itself, almost, they're gonna reutilize the, uh, the foundation that's there at the garage and the mudroom. I, I think it's, I think it's a nice plan.
Thank you.
Good. Keith?
I agree with Denise, uh, Rob, and, you know, due to the, the so- the, the shape of the lot, there's not a lot to do there, and I don't, I don't see any problem with the variance.
How about you, Ed Ionati?
Couple of questions, the. You're adding a bathroom, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, so did you have to go to DEM and change your system?
System's alpha design right now, also, along with the house plans.
Okay.
Plus, it's, you know, it's, the system was replaced in the, I grew up across the street, so the system was replaced in the mid-eighties, so honestly, it's forty years old. I just assume, thirty years old. I just assume, forty. I just assumed replace it, so it's fresh and new. Me and my wife, you know, this'll be the, probably the last house, as we say, so. One of the nice firsts.
Okay, so you proposed a new septic system design, approved by the state?
Yeah.
That's in the present proposal. Okay, thank you, Ed Ionati. All right, um, Ed, you have anything else?
Uh, no, that's the only question I have. Thank you.
All right, Lenny?
I just was gonna ask the same question that, uh, Ed had, uh, about the septic system you're adding a bathroom, but doesn't it usually just go off the, uh, bedrooms?
It does, sir. He is, it's based upon the number, it's either a three, a three-bedroom design or a four-bedroom design. He's only got three bedrooms. He's not increasing. So, um, I think he could, if, if his existing system was designed for three bedrooms, he could have kept it.
Right, right.
Sounds like he'd like to put a new system in to get a fresh start, so it's.
Right. That sounds, that sounds cool. That's a good idea. I, I, I like it. I like the whole thing, the whole idea. The way I understand it, with the building department, is that with the amount of work that's gonna be done with replacing the whole structure, is that you need to put a new, uh, septic, and they won't let you just reuse or re-engineer the one that's there. Just the way it was explained to me.
You could have got, you could have approached DEM and asked for a system suitability study.
Okay.
You could've, and you could've hired a professional engineer to determine if the system was still gonna function, um, correctly, but.
Oh, okay, well, the, the, the tank actually is behind the house. The system's on the side, over where the twenty-eight is, and the tank's behind the house, so it's honestly not where I want the tank anyhow, so I.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so the individual proposed a new, uh, state-approved septic system.
Yes.
Present, okay, um. Any other questions from the board, or any other ideas? Okay, at this time here, I'd like to see if there's, uh, uh, anybody who'd like to speak about this application, for or against it. Is there anybody present?
Is there any members of the audience here this evening who'd like to be heard on this petition? We have ten attendees. Is there anybody who would like to be heard on the, um, Balkan petition here this, this evening? Mr. Chairman, I have no, uh, no raised hands.
Okay, all right, uh, at this time here, uh, going through the, uh, dimensional variance, uh, uh, hardship which the applicant is seeking relief is, uh, is due to the size of the posse, uh, and, in order to make lot useful. It, it is existing, but he's gonna, as he said, tear it down and redo it, uh, the applicant makes no claim to physical or economic disability. The hardship which the applicant seeks relief, uh, does not appear to be any hardship created by any prior actions of the applicant. The applicant is, is not, is not motivated by financial gains, but is for additional living space. Um, granting a variance, uh, appears, uh, will not alter or change the surrounding area, because there's already, uh, a, a, a lot, structure there. Uh, uh, it doesn't look like it's gonna, um, you know, be like a problem within the area. It's not gonna increase the residential density. And the hardship the applicant would suffer if not being able to add on the garage is more than a mere inconvenience. I have no other things for a dimensional variance, unless somebody else would like to. David, would you like to add anything?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I, I had to unmute myself. Uh, I know I don't have anything to add. I, I think the board has, uh, covered the review of the facts presented by Mr. Balkan, and we'll be able to incorporate that into a written decision.
Okay, special use permit, uh, egress to the property has been there, and he's just improving it. Um, it will be sufficient off-street parking, because that's a big thing in that area. Parking can be very tight at that location. Uh, trash storage is existing. Uh, the utilities are what is present there. Uh, no further screening and buffering will be necessary. There will be no, uh, exterior signs. Existing rail lot will remain unchanged, and it is compatible with the neighboring properties. This is residential use, not, uh, industrial performance standards. Uh, uh, I've seen, uh, I don't believe that, uh, granting the special use permit will, uh, to create a dish, uh, create impeccable he- health and wealth, uh, harm to, to the public, uh, for safety, health, and more on welfare. Okay, uh, going through all that, is there anything else the board would like to add to this?
I think you covered it, Bob.
Okay, how about you, Russ? Crossman.
I'm fine, Mr. Chairman, thank you. You're all set.
All right, at this time here, I'd like to have a proposal to vote on this tonight, if, uh, somebody.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We vote on this tonight.
I'll second that.
Okay, Keith is second, and Denise made it. All those say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. Okay, at this time here, I'd like to have a proposal to vote on this now.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one quick question.
Sure.
Um, we don't have a set of final plans, and we don't have an approved septic system. I'm assuming he's gonna need both of those before he can get a building permit?
Yes.
Right, okay, that's what he's proposed.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. I just wanted to make sure we didn't need any stipulations.
Well, that would be the stipulation.
Does he need the stipulation, though, if he can't do it without the buil- I mean, he can't do it without the building permit, and he can't get the building permit without having done both of those things, right?
Right.
So.
We can just cover us.
Would a, would a stipulation kind of just be redundant?
Uh, David, how do you feel on this?
I, you know, I, I think because he, he, because he's testified that he, he's applying for both of those things, and frankly, as a practical matter, he needs both. I, I would just incorporate that into your motion, uh, as conditions, uh, for the approval, so I don't think it'll be a problem.
Okay, as conditions for the approval. Okay, so that will be, if approved, they will be, uh, into, uh, the approval process, correct?
Correct, that's correct.
Okay, uh, at this time here, I'd like to do a roll call vote. Denise, how do you vote?
Approve is presented.
Keith Claudio, how do you vote?
Are we voting on the dimensional or the special use permit?
Uh, you're correct on that. We should vote on the special use permit first.
I, I approve.
You approve. Denise also approved for a special use permit.
Yes.
Uh, Edward Ionati, how do you vote?
Prove.
Prove for a special use permit. Lenny, how do you appro?
Approve.
Approve for special use. Chair also approves for a special use permit. Now, at this time here, I'd also do a roll call vote on the dimensional variance. Okay, Denise, how do you vote?
Approve.
Okay, uh, Keith Claudio, how do you vote?
Approve.
Edward Ionati?
Prove.
Lenny, how do you vote?
Approve.
Chair also approves. Application is appro- is approved as presented. Okay, uh, thank you. Next.
Thank you very much.
What do we have next? We have, uh,
John, could you handle that?
Yeah, um, so, next, under new business, we have owner applicant Brian Madison. Uh, location AP seventeen lot sixty-one, fifteen eighty Hill Farm Road, zone RR twenty. The applicant is seeking a special use permit to construct a garage in the front yard. The fifty-six by forty-two by twenty-three-foot garage will also require dimensional variance for height and side yard setbacks. It'll be ten feet from the south property line where twenty feet is required, and it'll be twenty-three feet in height where fifteen feet is allowed.
Okay, is the applicant here?
I'm here, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, can I see you, please?
Right here.
There you are, okay. All right, very good. Okay, give your full name and address for the record.
Brian D. Madison, uh, fifteen eighty Hill Farm Road, Coventry, Rhode Island.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you to raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this time here, let's, you know, is the uh, applicant, is the application been read into the record? Uh, John?
Yes, yes, I ju- I just didn't.
You just did it, okay.
Yep.
All right, uh, sir, would you please explain to me what you'd like to do, in your own words?
Sure, uh, I wanna build a, a garage for personal use, for vehicle parking and storage. Uh, that's why I'm going for the special use permit and the dimensional variance as well. Um, the proposed, uh, the proposed building will be, uh, in the, more or less in the front of my house, uh, given, uh, I have one right of way. And, um, the structure is fifty-six feet wide by forty-two deep and twenty-three feet tall, which is why I'm going for, uh, the special use and dimensional variance, and then, um, in the height of the proposed structure exceeds the maximum zoning requirement of fifteen feet, and obviously, I'm gonna be within that ten feet of the, my neighbor's property, so.
Okay, now, you are on the located on the what's that? That's a, uh.
It's like a family compound, yeah.
Yeah, you got, you have, we have the original family compound. That's the Hebit estate, correct?
Correct, sir.
All right, so that's the very first one that was ever done, I understand, in the town of Carver. Okay, um, your entrance is, Russ, do you have the entrance to his?
I do. What you've got here is you've got this residential compound that's comprised of one, two, three, four, five, approximately six lots. If you see where my arrow is. that is the common driveway that leads to all six of these parcels coming in. This is how Mr. Madison accesses his property from over here. He has no access over here whatsoever. And I, based on his testimony, I mean, I believe the difference in elevation from here down to the road is roughly, what do you say, twenty feet?
At least, yep, correct. Right.
So this is where his access is. So even though this is considered frontage, if I zoom in a little, your front door, sir, is right here, correct?
Correct, yep.
And this is where the driveway comes in and these are way, this is the access to your property.
Correct.
Right here. And you're looking to put the garage right over in this vicinity, correct, sir?
Exactly, yep.
Right, so.
What is that right there now, Russ? Is that a garage right there?
No, that looks like it's an old Conex box and three trucks.
Yep, correct.
Okay. So he's gonna remove the Conex box and put a brand new garage?
Hopefully.
Right. Okay, so I can see really why you want to put it so cold in the front.
Correct.
I mean, it is the front, but it's not, it's really not the front. You know what I'm saying?
Well, that's one of the very first, I understood, compounds created in Coventry.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I don't go back that far.
And I think it's worked very well from the number of years. And I think they control the access to it.
Right, and if I, and correct me if I'm wrong, but this was what they used to call the family compound. Is it, is it all family?
It still is all family except for one lot in there, just one we sold outside the family, that's it.
Yep.
It has its pros and cons.
I understand. But that's how that whole family compound was designed to be back, and then it evolved into a residential compound and it got away from the whole family structure.
Yep, just a little bit, yep.
But everybody chips in and maintains the entrance?
Correct, yeah, we have a, we have a road agreement together with all the properties that are up there. And my next door neighbor is my father-in-law, so.
Okay, good.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I don't mean to interrupt, but could I ask either Director Crossman or Mr. Studley? Just to clarify, because this is also like the last application, this is for a special use permit and a dimensional variance. And if I could just have one of those two gentlemen review why this requires a special use permit.
Russ, I'm gonna have you take care of that.
Sure, I'll take care of that, yeah. What it is, again, this lot also, as, this is in a two-acre residential zone. He's only got the one point two, three acres, so he does not meet the minimum lot size, so it's an existing non-conforming lot. So therefore, anytime you do an expansion of an existing non-conforming lot, you have to obtain a special use permit. So that is why Mr. Madison is here, because he's expanding his property by desiring to build a garage, which necessitates the need of a special use permit. So that's why he needs the special use permit and then the dimensional variances, because he'll be ten feet from the southerly property line and twenty-three feet in height. He's looking to build where fifteen feet is allowed in the R two zone. So that's just a breakdown of the special use permit and the two dimensional variances.
Okay, so this is not treated as one lot. This is treated as, on the record, as four lots within this compound, correct?
Yeah, but we're only here, the petition this evening is only for this one lot, lot sixty-one. Yeah, he is the only applicant and this is the only lot before the board here this evening.
Okay, so he needs a dimensional variance and also a special use permit, right?
Correct, he'll need two dimensional variances.
Two dimensional variances, okay. Now, the special use permit's gonna be because of the building.
The size of the lot, it's a pre-existing non-conforming lot in the R twenty zone.
Okay. All right, does the board members have any questions on this?
There's not, there aren't gonna be any, or is there like an in-law apartment or anything above that?
There is not.
There's gonna be what, storage or anything up above it?
Just storage, yep.
Gonna be windows or anything up there also?
I believe there's one window in the drawing, but that's just storage and there's only one window on one side of the building because it doesn't go all the way across, so.
Are there gonna be stairs?
This is my little toolkit.
Are they gonna be indoors or outdoors?
Indoors, the stairs.
Lenny, I got a picture here of what he's referring to, law plan.
You're welcome.
And it shows the stairs on the inside right here.
Yep, thank you very much.
All right, after I get done my meeting, honey, if you want to, we'll, we'll give her a call and make sure we're all on the same page, okay?
And again,
We can do that.
Here's the elevations you were asking about also, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Denise, did you have any questions?
Hi, Bob, no, it's, it looks like it's gonna be the least relief necessary. It isn't, you know, an odd lot. But I think it's gonna, you know, I think it's a good plan.
Okay. How about you, Keith?
No, like she said, due to the fact that he got that shared driveway and no access to Hill Farm Road on his law, I think it's the least amount, least amount of relief necessary.
Okay. Lenny?
I'm good with everything.
How about you, Ed Ionardi?
No problems with it, Bob. I believe the question with the garage gonna be in the front yard. We've had this situation before where we all consider the front of the house being on the water. So we're actually in the backyard. If you know what I mean. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, I agree with you, I agree with you, especially.
Eddie, Eddie, that's only in pond speak.
Exactly, when there is water.
Yeah.
I have no problems with it, Bob. Thank you.
Let me see if there's anybody in the audience with to speak on this application. All right, thank.
For the record, Mr. Chair, I just also like to say you did also receive a positive recommendation for the planning commission on the issuance of these special use permits. That should have been also attached in your, in your report. Is there any members of the audience here this evening who would like to be heard on this petition? Again, I'll ask, are there any members, any, any audience members here this evening who would like to be heard on this petition here this evening? Mr. Chair, I have no hands raised.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. We vote on this application tonight.
Okay.
I second.
I have a motion made and seconded by Keith, made by Denise. Say approve, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Eyes have it. Okay. Going through the dimensional variance. The hardship is actually due to the, you know, the slope of the land, the size of the land as we went through earlier, it was already testified to. And the location of the water where it's actually located. The well, it's, you know, it's not a result of any prior action of the applicant. Nor is it motivated by financial gain by the applicant. Granting this variance will not alter the character of the surrounding areas and it does fit in with the area. I also believe that it will not impair the area and it will, like I said, fit in. The hardship the applicant would suffer not being able to build this garage is much more than an inconvenience. Also, we go on to the special use permit. There, I like the way the control, the access is through the single entrance off of Hill Farm Road to the residential compound. I think that's worked well and that's also the reason why he requires the special use permit and also rather than the variance for the garage being located on the front. There will be sufficient parking on the property. The utilities are already available. Adequate trash already available. He has plenty of screening and buffering. There will be no signs. Lot size is compatible with the surrounding properties. And the proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And granting a special use permit will not affect the health and safety and welfare of the neighborhood. All right, does anybody else have anything else they want to add to this? All right, I had none. I'd like to have a vote for this application since we voted, we voted to vote on it tonight. Denise, I'm gonna start with you on our vote for I don't see why we can't do the, instead of doing separately, the special use, I guess we can do a special use permit first. Denise, how do you vote on a special use permit?
Approved as presented.
Okay, Keith?
Prove as presented.
Ed Ionardi?
Approve as presented.
Lenny?
Approve as presented.
Chair also approves as presented. Now on this dimensional variance. Denise, how do you vote?
Approved as presented.
Keith Cludia, how do you vote?
Approved as presented.
Ed, how do you vote?
Approved.
Lenny?
Approve as presented.
Chair also approves as presented. Okay. That takes care of that application. What do we have next, Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
We have the two appeals next.
Okay, will you read the first one into the record?
The first one is Vincent Poska, AP three-two-nine, lot five-five, twenty-seven Casey Lane. Appeal of zoning enforcement officer's notice of order stating the keeping of alpaca is not permitted.
Okay. The applicant here.
What question?
You have to unmute yourself. There you go.
Sorry, here I am.
I have a question.
Go.
Go ahead. Did you have to close the board and open as the appeals board or, because I know.
You're correct. Thank you for correcting me on that. I'd like to close the Coventry zoning board of review and over at the Coventry zoning board of appeals. And it's already been read into the record on the appeal or the zoning enforcement's notice stating for keeping alpacas is not permitted, okay? And now we're at this time here, we have the applicant on record. Is the applicant here?
Yes, sir, right here.
Okay. Please give your full name and address.
Yep, Vincent Poska, address is twenty-seven Casey Lane, Coventry, Rhode Island.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you to raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I swear.
Okay, as you heard, the appeal is stating the keeping of the alpaca is not permitted.
Yes, sir.
How would you like to address this?
Well, when I did my initial research into the animals that I was purchasing for my homestead, I reviewed what was online on the Coventry website and I did not find anything that was restricting the use or housing of alpacas as pets. I know that there is a livestock guideline about acreage and I'm short of that acreage for livestock. I didn't know that these were considered livestock by the town of Coventry. I thought they were small farm animals. And I don't plan to ever use them commercially. I don't want to breed them. I don't want to produce fiber or meat from them. So, you know, they're just my pets, basically. Here they are. They're no larger than, I guess, the large dog would be. They're pretty docile. Right now, I'm standing in my backyard and I'll do a spin around so you can see that I'm completely enclosed in the wood. And you cannot see any neighbor's house. You can't smell the alpacas from the street. You can't hear them because they make no noise. This is their sleeping shelter. It's located more than fifty feet away from any property line. I did that intentionally to be courteous to neighbors. I remove their manure on a daily basis and I use that on my garden, which I think you might be able to see back there. I also have fruit trees in the front of my property, which I know aggravates some of my neighbors actually, which may have led to some of the complaints that you guys may have received. But I use the manure for those fruit trees as well. So considering the significant expense that I invested into my pets here, it would be pretty hard at this point for us to try and sell them or remove them from the home, considering, you know, they are our pets. We've always treated them as pets. They're not, they're not livestock.
Okay, at this time here, I'm gonna turn it over to Kerry.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, please. And Kerry, you could help me out with this. I just want to, and Mr. D'Agostino too. The applicant is here this evening to, and the board's role here this evening is to uphold or appeal Kerry's notice of order. That was, okay, I just want to let the board, there's gonna be no decision. The board tonight is not, I'm sorry, David, are you raising your hand?
I am, but I don't want to, I don't want to cut you off. I'll just add something when you're done.
So where I was going with this is the, the board's role this evening is not gonna say, Mr. Poska, you can keep the alpacas. And I want confirmation from Dave on that. I think the first step in this process is to, is the board for to issue a decision on whether or not to uphold the zoning enforcement officer's notice of order. Dave?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Director and Mr. Chairman, members of the board and also for Mr. Poska. I was gonna interject this after Ms. Karowski gave her presentation, but I think now is an appropriate time. So you heard that the board went into, went from the zoning board to a board of appeals. And what that, why that's significant is that actually puts the case in a slightly different posture as Director Crossman indicated. We are now, we're now under section, article four, section four-twenty-one and four-twenty-two of the zoning ordinance, which as Director Crossman indicated, allows this board to either reverse or modify any order requirement or decision or determination of the zoning enforcement officer. And it does require a, a concurring vote of three of the five. Unlike the other motions we heard tonight on on variances and special use permits, which require four out of five or a super majority. on variances and special use permits, which require four out of five or a super majority. Basically, what the board is, is, is asked to consider this evening is the, the efficacy of the zoning officer's notice of violation or notice of order of violation. So I think, Mr. Chairman, I, I think that you, you're handling it the right way. You had the applicant speak, lay out his foundation, and I just wanted to cover the procedural issues. I will try to assist wherever I can in, in terms of the procedure. And I think you should turn this over to Ms. Karowski at this time.
Okay. Carrie?
Okay, so this was brought to our attention due to a couple of complaints brought in from the neighbors. When reviewing our ordinance, there is not enough land to accommodate these animals based on Article 6 in the Table B. There's a minimum of two acres for the first two large animals, and then one acre for each after that. So after a little bit of discussion, the animals are permitted, but they're permitted based on the size of your lot. And that's where the issue comes in. Based on the size of Mr. and Mrs. Pasca's lot, there's not enough land to accommodate these types of animals. They are allowed, however, to have like 25 chickens or ducks. But that's where I'm at with this.
If I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just ask Director Crossman, are you able to put Table 6.5 or Page 6.5 of the zoning ordinance up? Because I, I, I think, and I, if you can, I just want Carrie to confirm that that's the, the relevant section that she's referring to. I think it would be helpful to everybody to have that in, in front of us. Is that possible?
It is. If you will give me just 30 seconds, I'll have it up.
Thank you.
Russ, it is in, it's in the staff report as well, that specific section. If that's easier.
The table is?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. You know what? It was just as easy to. Okay, so let me. Oh, I know, I brought up the wrong one.
Well, you should be okay if you go all the way to the front. It's in the Article 6, Section 603.
Yeah, I, let me go back. One of those days. So let's see. Which section is this, Carrie?
So it's.
Table 6-1, which is found in Chapter 6. And you have to go to C, I believe it's 2, Carrie?
It's B6.
B5.
You sunk my battleship.
Russ, I was able to find it. If I can share my screen.
Hold on half a second. Cody would have to do that.
Anybody can share their screen at any time as long as no one else is.
John, you can go ahead and do that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, just while we're waiting for Mr. Studley to put that up on screen, I know and, and my, you know, my job here is, is to, is to assist the board in its deliberations. I, I'd just like to point out one, one point. And Mr. Pasca referred to the alpacas. I, I believe he referred to them as livestock. And under, under the zoning use table that Mr. Studley is working on putting in front of you, B05 is the commercial boarding of horses or other livestock. And, and this would be this, there it is. Thank you. This I, I'm not trying to steal Carrie's thunder, but what Mr. Pasca has described as, you know, he's not, he's using them essentially as pets. I, I think the board could find, I'm not suggesting that you do this, it's your decision, but that a recreational or hobby or educational raising of farm animals is, is, is consistent with the keeping of, of a pet. And, and, and I, I think this is the applicable table to refer to. I just wanted, I just wanted everybody on the board to have a reference to what the zoning ordinance provides. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Bobby, I have a question.
Sure.
Mr. Pasca, you had said that you're keeping them as pets, but to look at them, they look like they've been recently shorn. What did you do with the wool?
Actually, I composted it because it costs me hundreds of dollars to get it turned into any type of yarn. And these types of alpacas are not bred for their commercial purposes, so they have no commercial fiber value. They're called pet quality. So really, I would lose more money trying to use their fiber than it's worth. I wouldn't be able to sell it for any real value.
So, I mean, would you, do you consider giving it to somebody who, who would attempt to make it into some sort of fiber?
Well, see, the way it is, it's so nappy and short with these, with these girls. It wouldn't make high-quality yarn. And it certainly wouldn't be cost-effective for somebody to do that. So I guess most of people in my situation just throw it out or compost it. But I'm not opposed to giving it away if somebody wants it. But the reason why they need to be shaved is because in the springtime, right about now, actually, it gets so hot when they have fiber, they sweat so much. So I have to get them sheared year just so that they don't overheat during the summer.
No, I understand that part. I was just wondering if it was, if it was because you were, you know, collecting their wool to be used for fibers or yarns or anything. That's.
Yeah, these particular animals wouldn't qualify for that, unfortunately.
What's the difference between a, 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 a pet alpaca and a, and a fiber alpaca?
Basically, it comes down to the amount of fiber they produce and also the quality of the fiber they produce. So they call it crimp. And if the, if the fiber doesn't have a certain crimp to it, it's not as fluffy or as soft. So these are more kind of nappy. And like if you did turn it into, say, a sweater, it would be like one of those really uncomfortable sweaters.
Okay.
But it just didn't, it wouldn't work well. So I guess in another country, these animals would be used as a meat source. That's pretty common, you know, in other countries to breed them for meat. But in America, when commercial fiber producers have, you know, they breed. So if they breed some animals that are lower quality, they sell them off as pet quality to homesteaders like myself. So I use them as pets. And I use their manure, like I said earlier, on my garden. So it saves me some money on the, the manure, but it costs me money to keep them. So it's almost a wash with, with the expense on my end. So that's how I, I consider them pets. You know, I'm out here every day feeding them from my hands. My wife, the same thing. And actually, it's funny, some of the neighborhood kids come over and they like to say hi to the alpacas. And we've had a lot of support from our, our neighbors in the development. A lot of people come by almost on a daily basis just to, just to try to see them, actually. It's funny.
Okay, Carrie, how much land does this individual have?
1.3 acres.
And it's, he's required to have how many acres?
So it would be two acres for the first two animals, and then one additional acre for each additional animal. So he would.
Qualify for one?
Correct.
So how would this individual believe that if he doesn't qualify for one, that he'd be qualified for farm animals?
So the reason why I was under that assumption was because we're allowed small farm animals up to 25. But with my size lot, I'm not allowed to have livestock. So with the definition of livestock on Coventry website, there was no mention of alpacas. But it made a list of other animals like horses, cows, pigs.
Excuse me, okay, excuse me. So you're saying you need at least two acres for livestock animals. But you don't have two acres. So you're saying that this is something else other than livestock that you've called it?
Right, yes. Small farm animals is what I assumed they were because there was no mention of them being livestock. And also in Hockington Island, there were, there was a similar case to, as mine, where they had four pet alpacas. And the town ultimately ruled that they are considered pets because they're not being used as livestock.
Okay, all right. That's, okay, but you don't even have.
Dave wants to comment on that case, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, I, I have a, through the chair, I, I do have a question for Mr. Pasca, and that is, I believe he's indicated that he believes the alpacas are livestock based on the Coventry zoning ordinance. And I, I'm not trying to, not trying to be argumentative or anything like that, but I, I don't think livestock is defined within the definitions. If he wants to point to the definition, I, I think the board can take a look at that. I would point out that if these animals were intended to be kept for commercial raising of their, their fur, if you, and, and that I'm reading from Section 04, so it would be two up from the section that we're currently talking about. It is, it is permitted in the RR3 zone, but the note, the comment actually says requires five acres. So based on the language of the ord, of the ordinance, I, I don't think Mr. Pasca could keep these as, as a livestock or a or a, a production-type animal. That's not before the board. I don't want to confuse anybody about that. But I, I am curious as to the, Mr. Pasca's conclusion that they are livestock.
Yeah, absolutely not. I do not believe that they're livestock. In many cases, they're, they're not considered livestock. And if I thought they were livestock, I would not have purchased them. Because I was aware of the ordinance saying we can't have livestock because we only have 1.39 acres. You know, I wouldn't have. I wouldn't have gone out and gotten a cow, you know? Because I know that that's livestock. It's bred to produce meat. You know, these aren't bred to produce a commercial product. I'm not producing any financial gain on them whatsoever. If anything, I lose money annually housing them, just like any other pet. So again, I don't, I don't believe they're livestock.
All right, how many, how many alpacas do you have?
Just four. Because the, the reason being for four is because they like to have friends. If you keep less than four, they end up getting a social problem and they just get a little angry.
You're saying these are like, you, you said earlier, like a small dog.
Yeah.
If you have four dogs, you need a cattle license?
I, you got a cattle license if you like. I'll get any license you'd like me to get.
I'm just saying, you're not qualifying. I mean, I'm saying you only have, you, you have less than two acres, so I don't understand how you can believe you qualify anywhere. I, I, I'm open to, give me, you know, give me something that would make you qualify. I, I don't.
Okay.
I don't foresee anything.
Well, I do have, you know, enough space for them to graze.
That's your opinion.
Right, absolutely, yeah. We do, I bought a large parcel of woods in the back. And.
Yeah, but that's not yours.
Right, common space, yeah. I, I guess my point here is that they're not, you know, next to the neighbor's houses. They're kept away from the property lines. The smell doesn't transfer to other property lines. You know, the smell is very small because I remove the manure on a regular basis.
You don't move it, you're just moving it around in the property to different spots.
Right.
I have a question.
Please.
I have a question. So the, the ordinance law or how it's written, it states, you know, cows and pigs, whatever, and it doesn't mention alpacas, like you say. Well, this ordinance was written probably before, or most likely before anybody had any interest in all these alpacas. So that, that law should be, or the, the verbiage should be updated to include these exotic animals, if you will. Also, because before they, you know, people in Coventry were just, you know, worried about pigs, chickens, cows, you know, that kind of thing. Now all of a sudden, we're running into alpacas and llamas and special pigs and all kinds of things. And so I, I, I think, you know, you being misleading about, you know, what's on the law is this is, it's covered just because it didn't say it. I think it's, it's, it states it.
Yeah, I think that I, I, you know, misinterpreted the law, the, the way it's written when I was purchasing these animals. I think I misunderstood. To be completely honest.
If, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The, and, and I, I understand Lenny's frustration and, and Mr. Pasca's frustration. The, the unfortunate circumstance, I think, is that we have the ordinance that we have, not the ordinance we wished we had. And what I would just point out, and, and I, I would ask Carrie to speak to this if it, if it, if it was incorporated in her original decision. We've talked about livestock, but I, I think the comment, and Mr. Studley can put that page back up if, if he has it handy, but the comment refers to farm animals such as cows, goats, horses, and sheep. And then further on, it talks about other farm animals such as chickens, rabbits, and ducks. And so the ordinance appears to be making a distinction between the size of an animal. And I don't know much about alpacas, won't, won't pretend to, but I would think that an alpaca is closer to a sheep than to a duck. I, I think the ordinance, although Lenny's right, it doesn't include all these exotic animals and whatnot, but it does make a differentiation that's size-related, at, at least in, in my observation. It talks about, you know, farm animals such as cows, goats, horses, and sheep. And then it talks about another category, chickens, ducks, rabbits. Those obviously, size-wise, are much, are much smaller. But I just want to, I just want to make sure that the board has in front of it all the information that it needs to properly consider this. And I understand Mr. Pasca's reference to, to livestock, and I understand, I think he's testified as to what his interpretation was. I, 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 I'm just not sure that that's making the point, but I'm, I'm it's his case to make, so.
Okay, Carrie, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Um, no, actually, I was going to go where Dave just went because I understand the frustration with it all the time as far as basing what's live, what's large or small livestock, so on and so forth. But he's right, it's a little vague, but it does give you an idea. And unfortunately, you cannot consider
Okay.
you know, a sheep or goat the same size as something perhaps as a chicken or a rabbit. So Dave kind of summarized it all for me.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I was also going to put that I kind of liken these alpacas to sheep. You know, Mr. D'Agostino was right when he says, you know, they're, they're more like a sheep than they are like a duck or a rabbit or a chicken. You know, so regardless of whether or not Mr. Pasca uses them to produce wool or to produce meat or, you know, whatever, I do liken them to a sheep.
I don't think he's producing it for anything. I think he's keeping it maybe as a pet, like a sheep. Keith, how do you feel on this? Uh, Keith, how do you feel on this?
Well, I went by there Monday and, and the, the alpacas were in the front yard uh by the street. And they're good size. They're not small animals. They're, they're closer to a, a horse than they are to a chicken. They're, they're good-sized animals and um I think they need a lot of room. I, 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 I don't think they belong in that small lot, my personal opinion.
I actually have um a farmer that said he's, he's willing to come on here and testify that I have enough space for them for the sake of the animal um in terms of what they need for space and confinement and, and that type of thing. Um, if you'd like to hear from the farmer, he, he's an alpaca expert. He's been farming alpacas for about thirty years.
Well, the big thing, sir, Mr. Pack, uh, is that, I mean, it's kind of black and white. I mean, I don't see how that, you know, you don't have enough land. Uh.
It's not for the animal. It's, you know, the, the land um requirement is for the town of Coventry, obviously. But it doesn't, it doesn't say that the alpacas need that much land to survive. It's really more of, you know, a law or a, or a statute that you guys have probably to protect the neighbors or, or something. It's not, it's not for the health of the animal is, is what I'm trying to say.
Well, it's probably to protect the, the neighbors. It's also to make sure the animal is grazed on a correct amount of land.
It's, um, can I just interject for a second? I, I have to side with Mr. Pasca on that. It's, it's more coming from the town based on the health, safety and welfare of the neighbors, not so much the room. Um, I gotta tell you, I have a horse and she doesn't need a two-acre fields where my sister's horse needs a five-acre field, you know what I mean? Uh, so those standards, they're like people. They, you know, everything's is different, but it's, it's, like he said, it's based more on what the town came up with as far as what the space is concerned with.
Okay, um, all right, well, what I'm looking at is, these are the rules. I mean, we have to live by the rules we have to govern us, to give us an idea on how to do things. It's like a speed limit. Uh, so I, 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 I'm trying to reach for how to say that the alpacas would fit in this. But I haven't, and I'll, I'll go to the applicant or the individual and say, well, you know, it's not a matter of how, how would I make this fit within the rules and regulations I have to work with?
Well, I would, um, you know, I'm housing the minimum. Um, alpacas require for their health.
Would be one.
No, no, I'm saying for the minimum for the health of the animal, they require groups of four. Um, so I can't have one or, or else I'd not have any. You know, I'd rather give it up because it's not healthy for the animal. Um, they need groups of four to be healthy. Um, but my point here is that I would not breed. I would not accept any more alpacas on my land. Um, I'm not using them commercially for any purposes and I, I don't have any interest in doing that whatsoever. And if you would like, if you, if you guys can approve uh this variance, then maybe you could set a condition where I'm not breeding. I'm not accepting any more alpacas, no more, um, you know, advancement towards an alpaca farm. You know, I'm sure you guys don't want me having twenty-five alpacas and calling them small farm animals. So, I mean, I don't want that either, to be completely honest. I don't want any more alpacas than I do now.
But I'm also concerned with the waste. The waste you're just moving around the property is not, you're not commercially get, removing it. You're just moving around the property.
Well, it's, it goes directly into the soil. I see your concern. Um, alp- alpaca manure is, is very uh light in smell. It's really decomposed grass, similar to what you would have in a compost pile. Um, it's, it comes out in these little BBs. And so I just scoop up the BBs and sprinkle them around my garden and they get rained directly into the soil. Um, I don't smell anything. Um, I bet if you come over and tried to find a smell, you would not find a smell. Um, I, I maintain my property very well. And I would, I would never be, uh, I would never want a smell coming from my property, especially not the, a smell that would annoy my neighbors.
Okay.
I would not allow that.
All right, uh, does any other board member have anything to say? Okay, Russ, did you want to, Crossman, did you want to add anything?
Uh, no, I believe we've covered everything for now, Mr. Chair. Um.
Would I open this up to the public now?
Um, I believe, yes, I need, we do need a motion to open up the public hearing. Is that correct, Mr. D'Agostino? Yes, I would, I would, I would entertain a motion to open up the public hearing so we could hear from the public.
Russ, I do have one question for you. I, I'd like to ask Russ Crossman.
Oh, sure.
I'm under the impression that he has one point three acres where he needs two, correct?
That is correct, sir.
And that's only to have, what, two?
Two.
Okay, and, and there's nothing in the, in our, in our rules and regulations that he could apply for a variance to use the one point three acres or that's not even allowed? You know, there's some, some spots where you can't even apply. Is this that situation? Am I correct?
Uh, I, I believe so, because he, I mean, Dave, I'd like you to opine on this, but he mentioned earlier, uh, Mr. Pasca mentioned earlier, and again, I, I want to get the, the board focused on.
Variants, yeah.
He mentioned, um, if they saw fit to grant this variance, there's no variance before this board.
That, that, that's, that's correct. Thank you, Russ. No, the board i- is being asked to rule on uh Carrie's notice of, of violation, to either uphold it, uh, rescind it or modify it. Those are your three choices. Um, as to, Ed, as to your question, um, this, this presents, I mean, it's, it's a difficult, I, 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 I think we all feel bad for Mr. Pasca in this circumstance. But this presents what, what would be referred to as a jurisdictional issue. Because the ordinance says that if you, you, this isn't about him being able to have these. He can have them, but then when you look at the comments, they, he is limited, uh, he, he can't have them because he doesn't have enough land. And that is not something that, that Mr. Pasca or John Smith or anybody can come before the board and ask to, to be relieved from that requirement. It is a requirement, he can't, he can't get relief from that requirement. If you have these type of farm animals, you must have two acres. Um, and, and even when you look further in those comments, you can have certain small farm animals, but up to a limit. I believe it's twenty-five, and then you have to have an additional amount of land to have any more than that. So this is what, what I would refer to as a jurisdictional requirement. And the zoning board doesn't have, there, there's nothing Mr. Pasca can ask for that would allow the zoning board to write a big X in this section of the, of the zoning ordinance. It's just, it's not possible.
Thank you.
I do not disagree with David. Okay, um, now at this time here, I do have a motion that we open this up for public comment uh by one of the board members.
So moved.
Okay, Keith has made the motion. I need a second on it.
Second.
Let me second it. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. Okay, Russ, at this time here, I'd like to open this up for public comment.
Okay, I have three folks um with their hand raised. Cody, do you mind bringing that first one in?
Yep, bring them in now. Dee, you are in the meeting if you have a comment.
Uh, if Dee could, um, are you gonna swear them in, Mr. Chairman? You have a, uh, could we uh see a picture so the chairman can swear you in?
Can you see me?
We cannot, sir.
Ross, I have to promote it to a panelist to, or him as a panelist to allow them to show a video.
Okay.
I can do that if you'd like.
I, I would, because the chairman feel, we'd like to physically see them uh in order to swear them in.
All right, hang on. Can you see me?
Hello.
Not yet, sir.
How about now?
There we go.
So I live, oh, you want to swear me in?
Yeah, give your full name and address for the record.
Yeah, Dave LaFaria, twenty-five Casey Lane, Coventry, Rhode Island.
Okay.
So I've lived, I've lived, uh.
Leave your hand back up. I'm gonna swear you in.
Oh, all right.
Swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
Yes, I do, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, please tell me what you'd like to comment on.
So I've been living at uh twenty-five Casey Lane since nineteen ninety-seven. Uh, I was the second house to go in that plot. And uh, there's only a handful of us that are the original people in that section. A couple of things that I wanted to make mention. Did the zoning board members get the letter that I uh sent out to each and every one of yous?
They did. It was received in the last month's packet.
And did, did you all have a chance to read that letter?
I did, yes.
So I, basically in the letter, uh, I, I tried to hit all the points that, uh, how it was affecting uh the immediate properties around uh Mr. Pasca's property. Uh, the ones that are a little bit further away probably aren't as affected as much. But initially, uh, the alpaca spent a lot of time on the front of the property, which I know was a probably a trial and error thing to see, you know, how things were going and that. Uh, at that particular time, uh, the, the stench from, uh, I don't know if it was the urine or the feces, but it was just almost unbearable when you would, you know, be doing yard work. Uh, it, it was, it was really, is very just foul smelling. It felt like you were in a zoo. Uh, and then uh, probably, I think at some point uh, a letter was sent to zoning, you know, stating that, you know, there was gonna be possibly an, an issue with the alpacas. And the alpaca slowly gravitated towards the back of this property, which was.
After, so they can.
Please, sir, 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 do not comment. Let the gentleman speak.
My permission.
You can comment.
Can I continue?
Yes, please.
All right, so, uh, you know, a fair amount of time went by, probably a couple of months, they were in the front. Uh, initially, he had three alpacas. And then uh, a short amount of time went by and a fourth one showed up. So then, uh, so the smell just gradually got worse and worse. It never seemed to go away. It just seemed like a constant uh foul smell. So then at some point, a letter must have been uh sent out to zoning uh stating, you know, what was going on. And the alpaca's uh slowly gravitated towards being housed in the back of the property, which uh, you know, cleaned up the front of his property quite a bit. The stench wasn't as nearly bad as what it used to be. Uh, the, basically at this point, the stench is, I mean, it's there. It, it, it doesn't leave the property. So it went from the front of the house to the back of the house. Granted, on the backside of several properties in that area, there's uh fifty acres roughly deemed open space. So it, it does somewhat dissipate, you know, because there's a, a lot of open land there. But it, it's still there. Uh, the other things that uh myself concerned about, I mean, you know, I, I've been there like I stated it since ninety-seven. Uh, we built our house, took a lot of pride in it. Uh, the property values, you know, I think has been affected by uh the way that particular property is set up with uh nu- numerous types of animals. Uh, you, you have, you, you know, I, I never took account, it's hard too. But I mean, there's probably close to twenty to maybe twenty-five types of chickens or guinea hens or whatever, whatever the label, the proper label is for them. You know, they're, they're all on that section of land also with those four alpacas. So, you know, that needs to be, you know, kept in mind too, as far as it's not just the alpacas. There's other types of animals that are there now also.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me for one minute. I just want to um address the fact that he is allowed a minimum of twenty-five small animals based on the size of his lot.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I'm not, I'm not denying that. I'm just saying that it's a long, it's a long with. It's not just the alpacas. There's these other animals there too. So it's, it's a, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a, it's an amount now other than the alpacas, it's them and whatever type of birds he has there too. So uh, my concerns basically are the property values uh being affected. You know, that particular property, uh, the way it's set up doesn't really go along with the rest of the neighborhood as far as uh what's being conducted on the property. Uh, the other thing that I've personally noticed quite a bit of is uh an increase of mice and, and rats. Now, we've always had mice, you know, I mean, you live, you live, you know, in, you know, a ma- a certain amount of land and you have woods and that goes with, that goes with the territory. But, you know, when it, when it tripled or even uh went four times the amount of, of mice or we never trapped, we never got rats, but now it's starting to trap rats. So I mean, some, something's changing to, to bring in, you know, the additional rodents for that particular section of land. Uh, the, you know, the other thing that, the, the, the amount of manure that they produce, it's like, well, uh, my, my, my well is in the back of the property along with, you know, his, you know, his uh chickens and birds and, and, and the four alpacas. So yeah, it is, it's fairly close, but, you know, I don't know how all of that, uh, you know, uh feces and uh, and the, the urine smell and stuff like that, if that is indirectly affecting my well. Uh, so that, that's something that's, you know, gonna have to be looked at. Uh, that's probably about it. I mean, it just doesn't see that it seem that it's compatible with the rest of the properties in that particular area.
You brought up some good points, good information to feed this board, and I thank you for your time up here.
And if, and if the town could look over that letter that I sent out to them, that would probably uh enlighten a lot of other things that uh you would be concerned about.
Okay, I thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Russ, do you have anybody else?
I do, sir. Cody, could you bring in Barbara, please? Barbara, can you hear us?
Yes, I'm Tom with Barbara and Tom. Can you hear us?
I, we can, but can, is there a way we could see you, toss, please?
One second, Russ. I, I gotta uh promote them.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Do I join as a panelist? Yeah.
Yes, please.
Yep. Hi, can you hear us now?
We can.
I can hear you, but I can't see you.
I'm gonna try to see how to get the, um, the video here. Oh, here we go. Okay.
There you go, sir.
Yeah, hi, I'm Thomas. Yeah, hi. I'm Thomas O'Kelly and I share the house with my father, Thomas, and Barbara here.
Three of us.
Yep.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you, uh, I'll only give you a full name and address, one at a time.
Yeah, I'm uh Thomas O'Kelly, twenty-nine Casey Lane, Coventry, Rhode Island, zero-three-one-six.
Okay, sir. Your name is?
Thomas O'Kelly, twenty-nine Casey Lane.
What your address is?
Twenty-nine Casey Lane, same address.
Thomas, Rhode Island. Okay, yes, ma'am?
I'm Barbara O'Kelly, twenty-nine Casey Lane, Coventry, Rhode Island.
Okay, thank you. At this time here, I'd like all of you to raise your right hand. Okay, you swear to tell the whole truth and but, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
I do. I, I do.
Thank you. Okay, one at a time, please represent something that has not been represented before.
Yeah, well, um first of all, I did want to corroborate what Mr. LaFaria had said, you know, about the odor. And there is, uh as well as there's quite a bit of, of a noise. And the concern that we have with the feces is, um, there's a brook that runs through Mr. Poska's property, the back of his house, to the front of our house into um the swamp and waterway. And we're also concerned about the wells being contaminated. And the research that I had conducted, and it's clearly evident uh according to the town website and documents that, you know, these don't appear to be a small animal, you know, farm animal. You know, it started, the progression started um very rapidly with chickens, turkeys, guinea hens, and let it be noted that he did have a rooster and was ordered to remove that rooster, and he did so. Um, you know, we want, we want our neighborhood to stay as we intended it to, and I can reference that to the planning website um that ensures that the town grows in a way that the residents intend. And we do not intend to have an agricultural business in the neighborhood. And the, the level and the scale of the um agricultural activity doesn't appear to be a personal use as far as we can see it. And it's, it's much, much of a nuisance. There's also an electrical fence around the entire perimeter of the property. Mr. Poska did tell me that he disconnected it from the front, um which seems rather unusual, considering if they are in fact pets, as he states. Um, and you know, in the fall, he did have many, sure. He had many, excuse me. Uh, I need to have my turn, Mr. Poska. Um, you know, there were many turkeys in the fall, and uh they, they're not, they're no longer there. Um, and the yarn quality, as Mr. Poska states, that is poor, that's based on an interpretation. From the research that I've done in agricultural individuals that I know that they can school the yarn rather easily, and it is uh very expensive. They get quite a bit of money for it. Um Let's see. I'm just going from some notes here. Um, so it doesn't seem to be the livestock guidelines. And we can see, in fact, we can see from our property what's going on. We can see the animals from the front and back. There are several different structures that have been built, different outbuildings that as far as the research I've done with the town, there were no permits pulled on that. Um, we've made numerous complaints, and I can speak, um the diocese as well, they have made many, many complaints. And we did feel that some of them may not have been received very well. Um You know, the, there has, I can corroborate with Mr. LaFaria. We've been here for about fourteen years. And we do have rodent traps, so we have been trapping quite a few more, right, mice and rats. Um, and it appears that he's throwing feed all over the lawn. There's really no lawn left. Um Uh, excuse me, Mr. Poska.
I'm not joking.
We, you need to be respectful.
Oh, I'm not on mute? Oh.
Okay, no, no, he's done. Put the other individuals on, please.
Yeah, so um Yeah, and we've noticed there's been more flies. We've had quite a few more flies in the area, um and a number of the neighbors have complaints, you know, being quite upset about this. You know, the zoning, the one-point-three acres, and Mr. Poska had referred to the common land. There's common land for the subdivision to be used for the hu- hiking and that type of activity. It's not for personal use for each individual. Um, so I think that Mr. Poska's understanding on several of these points is um a little bit off. Um Let's see, you know, the stench, when the wind comes this way, we do smell a stench. Um, but the level of activity over there with the different animals just, just seems much more than personal use, and the number of the um alpacas, I think, I don't know if I've got all my points here. Um, so we don't, we don't want this next door. We want the town to enforce the zoning as the residents intend. And we, we don't intend to have this um next door. And my dad, Mr. O'Kelly, would like to add something.
Let me say this right now. As far as I'm concerned in any law, he's not in compliance with Coventry ordinances, number one. And number two, I moved here, this is a regis- residential neighborhood, but if I wanted to be near a farm, I would have moved near a farm. Now, if he gets his appeal here, which I hope he don't, then other people will want to be doing this stuff. And I want to know if they're pets, why don't he bring them in his house like it would a dog? But my concern is too, when you have farm animals, I don't know if you people remember Piccolo's Farm in Coventry. Piccolo's Pig Farm polluted a whole lot of stuff, caused a lot of problems. So, we, we, we get concerned about when you have feces like that, you're gonna draw flies. And everybody knows flies cause disease. They bring disease. And I've got a very sick child in this house here, that's disabled and doesn't need anything to make her sicker than she is. She's immune compromised. And that's my concern about the flies and this thing. And uh, what was I gonna say? But nobody can tell you what's gonna go into a well. That's why they keep farms away from people's wells. Because things can lead to a different rate and cause pollution. And we always consider about our wells. Now, my well, I figure out how much water I use a year. It's unbelievable. We conserve, and still I think we use seventy-five thousand gallons of water a year. So this is percolating down, going through and in the, in the water cycle. So it will pick up eventually anything that's, that, that, that's can be in the, in the soil. But the major concern, like I said again, flies bring disease. When you bring, when you sprinkle your whole yard with chicken feed and feed chickens all over the yard, and let them go off, the feces all over, it draws flies and vermin. And we don't want to have any, any disease, especially after this COVID situation going on, which they thought it might come from animals. This is a major concern for me.
Yeah, and the thing is, um, you know, my parents are very elderly here. And, you know, this has been very stressful um for them to deal with. And I'm concerned, you know, about advocating health and well-being as well. And um, you know, I've, I know someone that owns a farm. And I know this is not firsthand information, but you know, she's raised alpacas for many years, and she's actually was trampled by an alpaca and almost uh stomped, and she had to actually have the alpaca put down. So there's always that risk that there could be an escape of one of the animals with small children.
Mister Chairman, I'm sorry. This has nothing to do with the notice order that was issued.
Um, excuse me, um, we're not, we're not done. We have our right to speak. And now, the question I have for you, Kelly, is if you had, you had mentioned earlier that you had seen um Mr. Poska's perspective, then why did you order the appeal, um, them to vacate the animals?
Let me just, let me just say one thing here. You know, it's not only health issues that I'm concerned with, it's the neighborhood per se. Uh, if this continues as this way, uh high house values could go down, and that should be a concern for anybody in this neighborhood. It's a beautiful neighborhood. Uh, we moved here in two thousand and seven. Everybody keeps a yard nice, and um this is very disturbing. So that's all I have to say.
Yeah, I just want to touch a point, and one last point, if I may, is Mr. Poska had said a homesteader like myself. Now, a homesteader, if you look back historically, homesteader is a person who makes a homestead with a farm and land and animals and that sort of thing. Um, and the yarn quality, that's based on an interpretation. Um, and this is, this, and I have asked Mr. Poska, if you, if you wanted all these animals, why didn't you just buy two acres a little bit further up the road? You know, um, I, I think I've covered several points and issues here. And um in closing, you know, the Department of Planning Development ensures that the town grows in a way that the residents intend. So myself and Mr. LaFaria and my family here, we don't intend to have a farm here. We've been here fourteen years. Mr. Poska's been here for two. So it's, it's clearly evident from the research that I've done, the interpretation is the law is, and is the law, and the zoning is the zoning. And we also feel that um that we've complained, it took quite a bit of complaining to. So I think, I think we've said everything that we need to say, though.
Thank, thank you.
I thank you for your comments. I appreciate your comments on the health and welfare.
Get down.
And we shall continue again. Russ, uh, Russ rather?
Yeah, can I ask a question, if you don't mind, of Mr. Kelly, O'Kelly? I, I just have a question, and, and, and maybe you can help me out. You've been there a while. Do you have any, does your neighborhood have an HOA in place?
Uh, no, we do not, but there's been talks that um, that many of the neighbors are thinking about um getting one.
Was there ever one when you first moved in?
No, but there, evidently there was supposed to be one originally, but that.
I thought, because you mentioned you had open space, common open space area in the back. And usually when I hear that, there's a homeowners association that's associated with that to preserve the maintenance of that open space.
Well, yeah, the, I think it was Elaine Enterprises, and that, that was the original intention, but that never came to fruition for whatever reason.
Well, they can't build on it because of swamp. It's, it's wetland.
Yeah.
No, and that, that's not where I was going with that, where I was going.
No, it was.
HOA docs that they create usually spell out no farm animals, no animals. They're very specific when they're drafted. That's why I asked if you had an HOA organization. That, that, that was my only reason to ask.
No, thank you for the question. But just to highlight one last thing is the brook that goes right through his property in the back of his house, that's bringing the water from the subdivision that goes down past our property. And then one house down, and there's like a retain- retention pond, and that all percolates down into a swamp. Like in the back of our property, it's actually usually very moist. So that's where the water goes down and percolates in. That's why we're so concerned about uh well contamination. It wasn't designed for this purpose.
It's a residential neighborhood, and I, and I still could be kept.
Alright, I thank you. Health and welfare. Ru- Russell Crossman?
Yes, sir.
Do we have anybody else?
Well, there's, there's another individual, Tom, with a hand raised. Is that you, sir?
Yeah, that's me, because I logged on on two devices, because I was having trouble with my Zoom, but thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, so is there anybody, I have no other hands raised. Is there anybody else here who would like to be heard on this petition here this evening?
Can I say something in response?
Yeah, just give me a second. Give me a second, please. Is there any other members of, of the audience here who are attending who would like to speak and be heard on this petition here this evening? At this time, sir, I have no other hands raised.
Okay, sir, if you'd like to speak again, go right ahead.
Alright, so I, I hear these concerns of the closest neighbors, and I find them very frivolous. And every, ever since I moved in, since the very first time I got checks, Tom came over and told me to get them out of my property. He said he doesn't want them there. He said they're going to make an HOA so that I can't have chickens. And then I started planting fruit tree. Dave came over, which is uh the other person who spoke um just a minute ago. He told me that all my fruit trees are gonna die because the last owner of this house planted fruit trees and they all died. And I shouldn't be doing what I'm doing, because it's not meant, it's not supposed to be here. None, none of these people want to look at a farm. Um, this is a homestead. It's not a commercial farm. I have never made a single dime off of this. I like to eat a lot of fruits and veggies. I like to eat turkeys that I raise. I like to eat fresh eggs every single day. Um, I've never once sold anything from my property. I consume it all. Um, as far as the, the water quality is concerned, I keep all my animals away from the water. You know, I'm not feeding by the water sources. I give them their own water source in their coop. I don't spread feed all over my land like they're saying. Um, the chickens eat off of the land because that's what they do. They eat bugs. They actually eat mice. Um, I feed them mice that I catch sometimes, and they, they tear them apart and eat them. Um, so I, I just want to say, ever since I moved in, my whole family has been harassed by these people, and it's, it's very disturbing to us um to be harassed on a daily basis um for living my life the way that I want to on land that I purchased with my own money. Um, if I have to get rid of the alpacas, I'm going to replace them with animals that are, you know, defined as allowed. Um, so I, I don't understand their, their concerns, and I really feel like I've, I've been harassed. Um, even just two days ago, um, the neighbor across the street was leaving his driveway and he flips me off. And then.
What's out there to do with alpacas?
Uh, this is because they told me they don't like my farm.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Said they don't like looking at my fruit tree.
I'm concerned with the health and welfare in the area. So let us continue to review this, okay? I thank you for your speaking. Okay, Russ, you don't have anybody else?
I do not, sir.
Okay, now I'm gonna address it to the board. Uh, at this time here, uh going by the legal process, this individual does not have the land for the alpaca. If anybody can bring up a point, and I'm willing to do it, not, I'm talking board members only here, or that would address him having the animals. So I'd like to hear it. Okay, and I'll start off with Denise. I'll start off with you. Hello?
Yep, Bobby, I'm sorry, I've had to unmute myself. Um, I am, uh, I'm inclined to uphold the notice. Um, they, you know, they don't have sufficient land. Um, I, I, I don't agree with Mr. uh Poska's uh interpretation of the ordinance that because he didn't specifically see alpacas listed there, that he considered them small. Um, like I said before, I liken them to uh sheep. And he does not have enough land for them, so uh I am going to uphold the zoning officer's uh notice.
Okay, I attempt to agree, but I will, we'll call it. Keith, how do you feel on this?
I'm on the same mindset, uh Mister Chairman. Um, it's, it's pretty cut and dry. That, it's two acres for them type of large animals, and it's there for a reason. Um, just for si- si- situations like this. I'm gonna uphold the uh, the zoning officer's findings.
Okay, thank you. Uh, at this time, I would like to have Ed Ionati.
Uh, I agree with Denise and Keith that it's in black and white. They got one-point-three acres, they need two. Um, you know, I understand his position, but you know, even if he had two, he could only have two alpacas and not four.
Okay. Lenny, how do you feel on this?
I agree with the rest of the panel. Um, that's what my point was in my rambling on about uh, you know, the ordinance. I, I uphold what Carrie, and I think we should move forward with this vote.
Okay. Alright, I would like to point out to the safety, health, and welfare of the neighbors that, though, it should be upheld. No personalities involved here, absolutely nothing. Uh, I think uh Carrie acted correctly due to the safetying of the people in the neighborhood, the environment. And I have tried research, another alternative, and I feel there is no other alternative but to uphold the intent of the zoning enforcement. Okay, uh, David, I'm gonna turn it over to you now.
Uh, yes, I, given, uh, given what the board has discussed, I'm going to, uh, recommend a motion uh, that, uh, the board entertain a motion to uphold the zoning officer's, uh, notice of violation. And, uh, if that gets a, um, uh, a, uh, someone to make that motion and then a second, uh, then, uh, take a roll call vote. And, um, I, I think that the record demonstrates the board's concerns, uh, regarding, uh, this. I, I think you've articulated them uh, along with the, uh, um, the zoning official as well as, uh, Mr. Poska having the opportunity to speak um, in, in, in opposition to, uh, to, to this. But, um, I'm gonna recommend a motion to, uh, uphold the notice of violation and that you take a vote.
Okay, at this time here.
If I may, Mr. Chair, just for the record, it's a notice of order, not a notice of violation. So I just wanted to make that statement, please.
Thank you, Russell. A motion to uphold the zoning officer's notice of order.
Okay, do I have a, uh, a record, uh, somebody uphold to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, we uphold the zoning officer's order.
I'll second it.
Okay, Lenny, second. Denise made it. All those in favor, well, I'm gonna do a roll call vote on it. I'll start with, uh, uh, myself, uh, the chair. I, I wish to uphold. Uh, Lenny, how do you vote?
I wish to uphold.
Uh, Ed Ionati? Ed, you there? Uphold. Okay, Keith Cludia?
I vote to uphold the notice of order.
Okay, Denise?
I vote to uphold the notice of order.
Okay, notice of order has been upheld. All right, now. Okay, uh, David, do we need anything else?
No, that concludes the matter. The appeal is, uh, is denied. And, um, uh, Mr. Poska's, uh, been able to hear that information. I think the, uh, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Director Crossman, your office will send out a notice reflecting the vote this evening on this decision?
Uh, yes, we will send that out. Normally, your office will forward a decision to us.
No, yes, I'll, I'll give, I'll, I'll prepare the decision, but I just, this is for Mr. Poska's edification that he will be receiving a copy of a decision that is reflective of the board's, uh, vote this evening.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I thank you. All right, do we have another matter in front of us this time?
Um, the next matter up is Antonio Angelino, AP 104, Lot 85, 562, Main Street. Appeal of zoning enforcement officers notice of violation stating the use of a two-family dwelling unit without the required special use permit.
Okay, is the applicant here or the?
I don't believe so, Mr. Chair. We have four attendees right now, and I know all four of them personally, and none of them are Mr. Angelino. Um, I don't believe he's here this evening.
Okay.
Mr. D'Agostino?
Um, yeah, I, you know, uh, this is up to, uh, up to the chair. Um, obviously, Mr. Angelino filed something with your office to get this on this agenda, correct?
Correct.
You know, I, out of an abundance of due caution and due process, I, I would recommend the board consider, um, uh, continuing this matter to its July meeting just in the event that there's some reason, um, outside of Mr. Angelino's control that he couldn't be here tonight. Um, I, I, I think that I, obviously, the board can hear it, but I think it's fair to do that.
Okay.
And, and our July meeting is July 7th, sir.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm gonna put, um, I have a motion on the floor to continue this to the July meeting for the individual.
So moved.
Okay, Denise made the motion.
Second.
A sec, oh, Keith is seconded. Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Nays? Okay, so we will continue this to next month. Okay.
Uh, Mr. D'Agostino, I, um, excuse me, Mr. Chair, I just got one final last question. Um, because we continued this to a date specific, uh, for that reason, he does not have to renotice, all right, because there was notice.
No, he does not have to renotice. I, I would, uh, I, I would think your office would send him a notice indicating that it, the matter's been continued, um, ju- just, just so that he's aware. But no, there's no, you don't have to renotice the whole matter.
Very good. Thank you.
Anybody who was interested, uh, would have the opportunity to come here and participate this evening. They heard the board vote to continue it to the date certain of the July 7th meeting and that's sufficient, uh, notice.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Okay, Carrie, do we have any other, uh, business to conduct tonight?
That is it, Mr. Chairman. I ask, I, we have a motion to adjourn.
Uh, Carrie, one second. Carrie, I didn't get anything for Coogan or DNS development in my packet.
You did in May?
No, I, I looked through May also. Can you resend them?
Uh, sure, you said what? Oh.
Coogan and DNS.
Coogan would have been a few months back, March or April, Mr. Chair. Uh, Russ, do you remember?
I, I don't, Carrie.
All right, so, so Coogan, yeah, Coogan was, has actually been continued a couple of times. It might have been your March or April packet.
We can get Keith another copy.
Right, and you said Coogan and, uh, Huntley Building?
Huntley Building.
DNS development Arizona.
Those didn't go out. I didn't send those out ahead of time so that you didn't misreplace them. Therefore, you would get them in July, so that's fine.
Fair enough. Thank you.
All right, Carrie, I gotta remind you that on the Coogan one, that's Raymond's point.
Yeah, I'm gonna call Russell, uh, and see what that, uh, what goes on with that so that I have a quorum.
Yes, so, uh, I just want to let everybody know that I cannot sit on that because I'm within oh, 100 feet or 200 feet of that applicant. Okay? So that's gonna be very important next month.
Okay.
Okay, if that's it, I, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
And Denise is seconding it. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Nays? Nice, have it. Thank you all very much for coming tonight.
All right, have a good night.
Good night.